Start in a few minutes.
Yeah.
I'm gonna get started in just about a minute here. You're muted, Wendy. Are you saying something?
Janaye, do you want to give the recording disclaimer, please?
Good afternoon, everyone. Our meeting is now being recorded and also being streamed to our Facebook Live page. And we will begin shortly.
All right, I think it's a good time to get started. Wendy, can you let us know whenever Sam joins us for the record?
Yes.
Great. Good afternoon, everyone. It is 1:33 on Tuesday, February 28, 2023, and I'm calling to order the virtual emergency meeting of the Probation Oversight Commission. I'm Ashay Jackson, and I am Chair of the Probation Oversight Commission. A special thank you to everyone who attended our last meeting and is here in the interest of the agenda items we were not able to address last week. Some other news, kind of sad but equally exciting. Today is Dr. Erica Reynoso's, our program director's, last official POC meeting. As you all know, Erica has been instrumental in the startup and success of the POC in guiding our inspections and leading the programs and services work that we do and really making sure that we always keep the youth and adults and families at the forefront of everything we do. Really important to our work, so we thank you, we thank her for that. This is great news that Erica is not, she's not going so far. She'll be joining Supervisor Horford's team as their Youth Justice Deputy. Erica, thank you, and we look forward to continue our work with you in your new role. We have two agenda items to cover in a pretty tight timeframe today, so we're going to jump right in. Wendy, Julie, and our ED is going to explain how you can participate in this meeting, followed by roll.
Thank you, Chair Jackson. Welcome, commissioners, panelists, and members of the public. We encourage everyone's participation in the meeting today, either in writing or through your live public comment. You will have a chance to give public comment on both agenda items before the commission votes, but there will be no general public comment today since this is a special meeting. If you want to talk and give your comments during the item, please use the raise your hand function by tapping the little hand icon at the bottom of the screen. That will add you to the queue. If you have any technical questions or for any reason can't raise your hand, can you send a message through the chat to the host, please, and Janaye will help you connect? If you'd like to make your, let me say, if you're calling in on your phone, you can raise your hand by dialing star three. That activates the raise hand function on our side. Once we call on you, you'll have to dial star six to accept the unmute request. Everyone will have two minutes today to comment unless Chair Jackson determines otherwise based on the number of commenters we have signed up for each item. You're also welcome to make a comment in writing, and if you do that before 5:00 PM, we'll connect it to the official record that'll be part of the minutes. Just send us an email to info@poc.lacounty.gov, and that's in the chat. Please do not send your public comments in the chat. Only the host will see it. The commissioners don't see it. I don't see it. And it will not be logged as public comment as the chat function does not comport with our Brown Act responsibilities. As you heard, our meeting is being broadcast live today to our Facebook page. You can watch the meeting on Facebook Live, but there's no engagement with users. Please follow us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram at LA County POC for lots of information about our meetings and other work we're doing and invite others to attend. We also have a YouTube account where you can watch all of the meetings. Some in their full meetings and some clips. You can subscribe and get recaps and recordings. I'm gonna call the roll now, so commissioners, if you will please unmute yourselves. Commissioner Canales?
Here, thank you.
Commissioner Carrillo?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia-Les is excused today. Commissioner Kokani?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis? I do not see yet, but we will let you know when he joins. Commissioner Meredith is excused today. Commissioner Jackson?
I am here.
So we have a quorum with four members present because we currently have a total of seven commissioners. Since our two new commissioners have not yet been appointed by the Board of Supervisors, we expect that to happen later today. And so we have either four or five when Commissioner Lewis joins, which means that all votes will need to be passed with three votes in favor in order for them to pass. With that, Chair Jackson, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you so much. We're moving on to item number two, where we will discuss and take any appropriate action on the probation department's involvement with auctioning firearms. Wendy is going to give us a brief introduction, brief presentation. Wendy, you can proceed.
Thank you. So the reason this is on the agenda today is that the motion that the board passed actually specifically asks the Probation Oversight Commission to do an investigation. And we have, you have, done an investigation that I'll talk about in some ways. And then there are other components of the investigation that are easiest and most appropriate, I think, for staff to continue. So the request is that you pass a motion today that delegates the completion of the report to the staff. And I'll talk in a second about the two options that you have for that. Before that, I just want to give you some updates into how that investigation is going. So you all have heard extensive comments provided by the chief at two meetings of the Probation Oversight Commission in which he outlined a quite detailed timeline of how the gun auction came about before his time and during his tenure. And then also what happened once he was alerted by the supervisor's office about the issue. So I've had the opportunity, as well as that, to have significant discussions with Deputy Chief Fletcher and with Deputy Director Howard Wong, who have explained a number of items to me that I think are helpful and will be included in any report back to you. Most importantly, I want to say that the, clearly, the items have been removed from the auction website. They were removed immediately on the same day. And the department is now going through a process to dispose of those weapons through a third-party vendor. That's a vendor that's utilized by the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department is also supporting the department with the process of recording the serial numbers of the weapons that will be destroyed and then doing what needs to be done to remove those serial numbers from the records. The one issue that I have found particularly interesting in this investigation is that because of the nature of the service weapons that were to be sold on the auction site, they are what's called off-roster weapons, which means that they are not able to be sold on the general marketplace except to sworn law enforcement. So even through the third-party website, you would have had to prove that you were sworn law enforcement in order to purchase the weapons. And that is, it's a nuance to what was reported originally, although perhaps an important one. And you'll certainly see more about that in the, in the report that I send back. So finally, I'll say that you have two motions before you. They're actually quite similar, and in fact, because of the timing, the difference is not significant. So either way, you choose to proceed is completely fine with me. One option says that you are delegating to me the responsibility to complete and finalize and turn in the report. The other one says I'll bring you the report back in a draft format before finalizing it. So that's, that's the end of my report, and I'm happy to answer questions and do public comments if you have any of those.
Thank you, Wendy. Before we move on to any commissioner discussion and the vote on those motions or decide on which motion is appropriate in the vote for that, let's do the public comment.
Okay, great. And I'm sure you noticed, Chair Jackson, that Commissioner Lewis has joined us. Welcome, Commissioner Lewis. If you'd like to make public comment on this issue of the gun auction report, please raise your hand. You can dial star three on your phone or use the little raise your hand function. I see one, so we'll put the timer up. Well, I did see one, and then it went away. If you, the name that just went up, if you want to make public comment on this item, you're welcome to. We did have a couple of people that pre-registered for this item, but I'm not sure if they're on the call. If you pre-registered on this item, can you also please raise your hand so that we can call on you? Janaye, any reason I should wait on this?
Not after your announcement. There are, like you mentioned, the pre-registered commenters. I don't see any hands raised, though.
Okay, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Jackson.
Thank you. Commissioners, any discussion on the motions that are in front of us? Vice Chair Kokani?
Thank you, Chair Jackson. Just a quick question, and this came up a little bit earlier, just in terms of the two motions. If it is obviously delegated to you and it goes straight to the board and then presented here, there isn't any room for like feedback or additional questions or investigation, be it by the public or the commissioners, correct?
Well, there would certainly be the opportunity for feedback, but not into what's included in the report. So we would have full public comment on the report, but you're correct that it would be, it wouldn't be in draft form. That doesn't necessarily mean that our initial report back on this item is the last time that we report back, in particular because I'm not certain that the weapons will be destroyed in time for the final report back. So there may be multiple report backs in a less formal sense, but this formal report is due mid-March, so we need to get it back soon. But that's sort of what I was saying, Commissioner Kokani, which I think maybe you've recognized, which is that it really, it's very possible to bring it back as a draft at this point and take any feedback that there might be because of the, because we're having this meeting today and can get it back to you next week.
Okay, thank you.
Well, for me, the motion, like the second motion seems like the clear next step. It feels important to me that we are able to look at the report prior to it being submitted. This is not a topic that we cover all the time, and we just want to make sure that before it's reported back on that we have our eyes on it and we're able to submit feedback in advance. So that's, that's my feeling about that. Any other commissioners want to weigh in on which motion is more appropriate? Anyone feeling strongly that we should go with one motion over the other? Commissioner Kokani?
Just voicing that I agree with you, that I think bringing it back here for both the commissioners to provide feedback and for the public to also react to it before it's in final draft feels really important. Not final draft, like in a final version, feels important.
Vice Chair Canales? I mean, sorry, what am I saying? Commissioner Canales?
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. I have to say that I agree with that. I think it's really important, not just for us as a commission, but for the public as well, to have that final review.
Okay. Is it safe to say that we will go with motion two, which is asking our staff, namely Wendy, to submit a report back to the POC before the March 9 meeting for a discussion and approval of the report? And I don't know if this is... But that could, that could totally stand as a motion made by myself and seconded by Commissioner Carrillo. So Wendy, there needs to first be a motion to decide on a motion, correct? Or there doesn't need to be?
I don't think so. No, I think since the motions are both listed, you can just say you're, you're making motion number two.
Okay, I'm making motion number two, which was seconded by Commissioner Carrillo, and we can now vote on that.
Okay, thank you. So the motion, I'll just read it. It says pursuant to the board motion directing the POC to investigate the recent gun auction, we authorize the executive director to complete the investigation and report on our behalf in collaboration with county council and instruct her to submit the report to the POC before the meeting on March 9 for discussion and approval. It was moved by Chair Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Carrillo, and I'll call your names for you to vote yes, no, or abstain. Commissioner Canales?
Aye.
Commissioner Kokani?
Aye.
Commissioner Carrillo? Sorry, I changed my own order here. Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
And Chair Jackson?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes five to zero.
All right. Any opposition or any, wait, I'm not even sure. Yeah, we don't need to address any abstentions or opposition, correct? Just because it carries and we're good to move on?
Correct.
Okay, the only thing I would ask, Wendy, we're gonna be looking forward to that report back, but I'm wondering if you could share with me at least as chair an outline of the investigation and things that are generally going to be addressed in that report? Is that possible? Nothing exhaustive, but just an idea?
Yes, it's, this is not going to take me very long to do, in part because the department has provided a lot of information about it, and there's a, there's a lot to report back already that's in a very factual format. So I'm happy to provide an outline, but I think I'll actually be able to provide a draft to give you and the public extensive time to review it before that March 9 meeting.
That would be great. Okay. Let's move on to agenda item number three, which is pretty exciting for most people attending today's meeting. We are going to be discussing and taking any appropriate action on the proposed plan for the Secure Youth Treatment Facilities, also known as SYTF. Wendy will give us some background information on how the proposal was developed, and then Commissioner Lewis will present the proposal. Thank you for that, Commissioner Lewis. We also have Patricia Song here, deputy, chief deputy, or sorry, deputy chief Patino, who will present on this item, and they will share any action taken by the JJRBG committee this week. And we also have Director Mary Ann Smiley here to answer any questions that you all might have. We'll leave it to those individuals to present on that item now.
Thank you, Chair Jackson. And I'll be really quick and just say that the proposal that you see attached to the agenda was developed through a collaborative process between the members of the Ad Hoc Facility Subcommittee of the Probation Oversight Commission, which consists of Commissioners Carrillo, Meredith, and Lewis, as well as the subcommittee, I don't know if the subcommittee of the JJRBG has a title, but it's, it's also on SYTF facilities, as well as a number of representatives from the probation department as an interim proposal slash solution to issues related to selection of SYTF facilities. And with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Lewis to present what he'd like to say about the proposal. We can't hear you, Sam.
I'm sorry, I have a huge problem. I'm in Sacramento, and my second computer just went down, which is where I had, trying to see if I have it on this computer.
Actually, I think this might be helpful for the public as well, but Janaye, you could put it in the chat if you could attach the link to the proposal, which is attached to the agenda.
That'd be perfect. And now I'm like, I can't seem to get that out of the...
Commissioner Lewis is in the chat box now.
No, but, okay, here we go. My computer did not want to work with me for some reason. Okay, here we go. So, so, and this, the things that we consider were the immediate needs of SYTF, currently spaced, but also taking into consideration all of the things that are transpiring within the SYTF. And so this, I believe we had this on the agenda last week, and so everyone should have had the opportunity to read through this. And so I'm not gonna read the entire document, but I am gonna read the sub-bullet points such as staffing and a special recruitment to, that the announcement should have went out of there, so if it hasn't already gone out, to immediately and successfully implement special recruitment of SYTF staff and program with highly qualified, motivated deputy probation officers. As most people know, most days, most weeks, I'm inside Berry J multiple times. This is something that we need to make sure it gets taken care of in order to not only bring up program, but to provide safety for both the youth and the staff that are currently housed in these facilities. The facilities that we're looking at include both Berry J and Campus Kilpatrick. The other, the second bullet point or number two for immediate interim solutions is Campus Kilpatrick is recognized as the premier facility for the county as a pilot for housing. Right now, it's just 11 youth, but we want to expand that. Pay the way to move forward for the overall SYTF program. There's urgency to utilize the capacity of Campus Kilpatrick. It's not being fully utilized right now. And we need to immediately begin to organize and transfer youth from Berry J to Campus Kilpatrick to reach a population of at least 36, no later than July of this year, 2023. Berry J Night Off Juvenile Hall. In recognition of about 85% of the disposition youth at SYTF are currently housed at Berry J Juvenile Hall. And that number grows daily as young people who are currently in predispo or having their sentences adjudicated. And so the recommendation is to immediately invest in the physical plant staffing and programming improvements to begin to make Berry J a safer, more rehabilitative environment until a better long-term solution is planned and implemented. So I want to make clear, this is the short-term interim. And there's a lot I can say about why this wasn't done in the past two years, which it should have been done instead of, the short term should have been happening two years ago. It hasn't. We're in this situation right now, and I think we need to center both the youth that are incarcerated and the staff that work in these facilities. When we take into consideration, this is, this is just for the short term, and this is not for the long term. Immediately begin the process to implement the following changes in Berry J. Physical partitions of each and every portion of the campus to create a new and separate campus for 72 beds for boys and young men, disposition to SYTF, and recommended DLR architects, as recommended by the DLR architects, and the attached renderings and proposals, which, which again, were attached last weekend this week. Invest in the physical improvements to the facility to create an environment conducive to safety rehabilitation and programming, including and beyond the current home-like environment improvements, which I've seen Unit Z and TV, and they look great. There's, there's more work we need to do on them, but one of the youth that came from DJJ said this is the type of environment we're used to. And these young people that came from DJJ, the, one of the first things that one of the young people asked is, are they gonna teach us how to write our remorse letters here? We were just about to start at DJJ, so that just gives you like a snapshot into some of the rehabilitative programming that they were coming from. Staff, staffing and administrative new East Campus at Berry J with DPOs assigned to the SYTF division managed under RSTB Bureau and not on the 56-hour work week. Invest in programming to meet the needs of SYTF youth, many of whom will be with the county for years. Four of the youth that came from DJJ were 19 years old and were sentenced to juvenile life. Two more youth that I know of were sentenced to juvenile life and are currently in Y unit. Increase the number of credible messengers in the program and work with oversight bodies to hold partner agencies, especially DMH, Lakewood, JCHS, and CBO contractors accountable for supporting the programming, implementation, execution, outcomes, outcomes measurement. For girls, number three, for girls, young women and gender expansive youth, immediately identify and prepare a cottage at Dorothy Kirby Center to serve as the interim solution for housing for SYTF girls, young women, and gender expansive youth where appropriate. As directed by the board and the probation department, must actively engage in efforts to decarcerate girls. That's our ultimate goal, is to decarcerate, decarcerate girls as Hawaii has done, young women and gender expansive youth. In order to reduce the number of needed beds at Dorothy Kirby Center for this population and expand the number of available beds at Dorothy Kirby Center for other youth who would benefit from services provided there. Number four, step down to less restrictive alternatives. The probation department should immediately begin investigating, investing in and partnering step-down alternatives, including Pine Grove, which is a fire camp. If you're not familiar with some of the young people, there's a great article that was in the paper about Derek Williams, who was a young kid that went through Pine Grove and who's now a firefighter. And local supportive transitional housing programs to identify options for youth and young adults who would be best served in non-carceral environments as they prepare for full reentry. Contingency and long-term solutions. Examine Dorothy Kirby in Los Padrenas. Juvenile halls as alternatives for boys and young men in long, in the long term, in the long term. So in the long term, we're looking at Dorothy Kirby in Los Padrenas. After years of research into the multiple facilities in the county, the model of, at Dorothy Kirby Center emerges as the most therapeutic and rehabilitative staffing program and housing model among incarceration facilities, especially for youth living and challenging, and the challenges of complex trauma, mental health issues, and other significant needs. Long-term planning for, number two, long-term planning. The probation department will, with significant input from the community, and I emphasize significant input from the community stakeholders and oversight bodies, engage in a long-term planning related to facility staffing and programming, including and selecting, including selecting and investing in more appropriate facility or facilities than Berry J to house the SYTF youth. So in other words, there, there are better choices than Berry J. This plan, in my opinion, this plan should include evaluation of other existing facilities and the other, the other existing facilities, other existing facilities in, and the significant focus on housing SYTF and all youth and less restrictive alternatives, including step-down programs, fire camps, and community placements. The goals of the Department of Youth Development and Youth Justice Reimagining should guide this plan. I did not, that's still a whole lot that I read. I did not read all of this. But that is what we discussed and what we think are the best steps to move forward.
Okay, next presenter from the subcommittee?
Thanks, Chair Jackson. I'll just speak quickly. I'm not sure if I'm up, and I'll step aside for Patricia Song here in a moment. But just again, to kind of piggyback on what Wendy had shared previously, this has been an ongoing conversation, obviously. There's a sense amongst certainly, I think, certain members of this body who we've spoken with and the JJRBG that we do feel a little bit stuck, just to be blunt. And so the need to kind of resurrect the conversation, we, this is our sort of subcommittee, subcommittee. So this is, you know, again, conversations that probation has been having with Patricia Song, Josh Green, and Bakila Ochoa, who sit on the JJCC and the JJRBG around some possible solutions. And so we've been meeting on a regular basis to discuss this and included some members of the POC, as stated, to really try to come up with, as Commissioner Lewis laid out, really just immediately, what are we doing? What's happening now? What is the next best kind of interim solution? And then really, as we talk about this, does the county, does the department actually have a long-term plan for, for these facilities? One of the things that came to light in the discussions really has to do with how, how our facilities work together in understanding, you know, we have both obviously pre-imposed adjudicated youth. How do each of the facilities work together? It became really apparent to us that it's difficult to talk about one facility in isolation because setting something aside may cause some other tension in, in one of the other facilities, right? So basically, I think where we, where we landed is trying to make the best out of what we have immediately and then really trying to frame the rest of this, this discussion around both kind of the stated goals of the JJRBG, but more importantly, the direction that the county is going with Youth Justice Reimagined. So how do we really take advantage of the resources that we have at our disposal to create spaces that are actually transformative? I will share very quickly, and then please, Patricia, jump in here. But I will share, the special recruitment notice did go out last week. So we're actively recruiting, which is a big, big step forward, and it's taken... So we're actively recruiting, which is a big, a big step forward and it's taken too long. But we were able to get that out and moving forward. As was shared and Commissioner Lewis shared this, the home-like improvements that are happening at Berry J, while not quite as far as we would like to go, quite honestly, in transforming those spaces, we have created spaces that are better. Units Z one and two are done, Unit TV is done, Unit RS is up next, I think is under construction now. And then we'll move on to X one and X two as well. Now those home-like improvements are happening anyways. So those are part of the settlement with the D O J. We, we are required to improve the facilities, the, the two juvenile halls. So the Berry J work will continue. And we're, we're making every effort to ensure that the S Y T F youth can be the first ones to move into those new units so that they could at least benefit from that. And then I also want to share that we were waiting to hear back from State Public Works Board on some of the improvements up at Campus Kilpatrick. We have now been approved to proceed. And we, I'm meeting with Internal Services Division on a weekly basis at this point to line up the work to make sure that we're moving steadily to hit that July target. We do think that a lot of the enhancements will be done by April, which is great news. So as we staff, as we improve, you know, do the enhancements at Campus Kilpatrick, we should start to see some young, some young men move over to Kilpatrick here shortly. So those are just some, some updates that I felt like were relevant based on some of the things that were shared. But I also, I also before I'll pass it over is just state clearly, probation supports the, the, the plan, the interim plan, everything that's sort of laid out here. We have some reluctance about certain facilities, but the, the huge benefit to having these conversations and, and being a part of this, this subcommittee and being a part of this work group is that we can kind of put everything on the table, right? We've had really fruitful discussions about all of the things that we need to consider and all of the things that we'll need to continue to consider. School space, parking, all of the things that are really needed to kind of sort through as we determine the best possible movement forward. So with that, I'll pass it over to Patricia and again, thank you, Commissioner for, for having me.
Thanks, Adam. I mostly want to be responsive to any discussion here. And so I'll just say a couple of things about, I think, why I'm here and participating, how I feel about these recommendations and then a caveat about, I think, the, the population coming back from D J J and the constant vigilance we should have around what the plan should be and the numbers that we should expect to prepare for. As you all know, I serve on the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council, although my involvement in preparing for the closure of D J J and the implementation of S Y T F is going on year four. So even before the J J, the J J C C formed, the J J R B G Subcommittee, the Youth Justice Advisory Group under the consultancy of the Burns Institute was asked to start planning in twenty twenty. So I think I come into this conversation, you know, with some wariness, with a lot of anxiety around the urgency of implementation, as I think many of the commissioners do, as does the J J R B G. So when I look at these recommendations, I share the sentiment that Commissioner Lewis shared, which is, you know, some of these should have happened already. And it is worth putting them all together, stating them comprehensively. And I think we do it more specifically than ever. I think the urgency of getting young people to Kilpatrick has been, you know, sort of the repeated call of the J J R B G as well as this body. And that to the extent that our bodies are in discussion and alignment, I think the clear guidance we give to the Board of Supervisors, as we've seen, right? Any facility we've put on the table has often been met with all sorts of pushback, whether it is physical modifications and the timeline and costs that it would take or the political and local opposition. So I think the premise here that there are no good options are not only political, but also policy-wise, right? Like the facilities that we have to contemplate here are old and not ideal. So there's a certain sobering that we had to experience in going into these conversations. So in the same vein that Adam expresses, you know, some, I can't remember what word you used, reservation or reluctance or something about these recommendations. I, I'll speak for myself that, you know, there was some real change of heart and coming to a recommendation like putting some investment in Berry J. And just with a huge caveat that, you know, these are immediate interim recommendations with a push, which I'm most excited about for long-term comprehensive planning, right? Like let's get clear and get some clarity from the leadership in this county around what we can commit to so that we aren't having this facility by facility conversation. So I think all of that is, has been a part of our many, many hours of conversations with Adam, with, you know, your team, with Wendy and members of this commission, the sense of urgency, the, you know, sometimes feeling powerless as to why implementation is taking so long despite our recommendations and feeling sobered and wanting to be helpful, right? To problem solve together. So these, I think, recommendations reflect all of those sentiments. One note that I, I just want to underscore, and I don't know if it's, it is in here in the preamble that, you know, there are these projected numbers that with the current S Y T F youth and returning D J J youth, we might expect up to a hundred and fifty young people. And I've raised this repeatedly that, you know, the, that projection is based on past trends and numbers of young people who have gone to D J J. It does not account for a number of things that I think the J J R B G has started to discuss that this commission should really have on their radar, which are at least two things. One is that young people are constantly being reevaluated to see if they can step down to a, a less restrictive setting, including just going home and actually terminating their D J J disposition. This is true for young people currently in S Y T Fs too. Some young people have already been in S Y T F for some time. And there should be a regular review process and assessment to see if they can be stepped down or if they are ready to go home. And we're already seeing numbers start to decline, right? So that the number that we can expect by July first is very likely to be well below a hundred and fifty. So some of these recommendations kind of thread the needle, right? That we have to be prepared if there are more young people. And we also don't want to prepare more than we need because that's not the right investment to make. So I, I know I've been a big proponent that our respective bodies be really, again, vigilant about this county working and mostly this is a collaboration, I think, among defenders, the District Attorney's Office and probation to plan for young people as much as possible to step down as soon as they are ready to a less restrictive setting. So I hope that's helpful and I'm happy to talk more, answer questions.
Okay, that was helpful. Thank you to all who presented. Wendy, let's proceed with public comment and then we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Thank you, Chair Jackson. I see one hand raised and we'll call on you in just a second. If there's anyone else who'd like to give public comment, please use the raise your hand function or dial star three on your phone. We would love to hear from you. We'll start with Sharice and Sharice, we're going to put the timer up. Hopefully. Great, thank you. Okay, Sharice, it looks like you're unmuted. Can we hear you?
I'm, I don't know. Can you hear me? We can, you can begin. I, I would like for the commission to consider the possibility that they are moving too quickly. I understand the goal to get the youth in a lesser restrictive environment. However, I don't feel like the options Camp Kilpatrick namely is the appropriate placement. Looking, I read the report, I read the proposal, but looking at the projections in terms of how many youth they are expecting. And then the facility, the facility itself, I don't think that the youth that are going there are ready for a lower level of restriction in terms of the environment. The phrase that was used in the proposal says home-like. And they, that the commission is looking at non-incarceral settings. But we have to keep in mind the youth in the population that we're working with. These are not youth who are in D J J for no reason. These youth have committed crimes. And considering that the crime rate is going up as these youth are being released back into our communities, we see an increase in crime and then to create a setting that does not incentivize them to not commit more crimes. When you can commit a crime and go to Disneyland for a little while and then come home, there's no, there's no incentive not to commit crime. I think that we need to be looking at not only incorporating programs into the systems that are already in place and the facilities that they currently have. I think we need to look into staffing. I think we need to look into programs that are effective, that have some real-
Thank you very much. That's your time. Thank you for joining. We'll go next to Aditi Sherakar. Aditi, you're unmuted. You can begin.
Hi, Aditi Sherakar, Children's Defense Fund, California. Just calling in to remind the probation oversight commission that you already voted on a motion that very emphatically said that you would not consider Berry J as a site to host or hold or house any S Y T F youth. Unfortunately, that's exactly where they've all been sitting, some for years. But I, I just want to call attention to the fact that no amount of improvement is going to make a difference in a culture in a setting like Berry J. This is one of the worst possible halls in all of California. It is the most prison-like. It is the staff and the culture that contribute to that. And this idea that you may be able to revamp it a little bit or reform it has been tried and it obviously fails every time. I think it's really concerning that we're even sitting here talking about renovations to Berry J or improvements to Berry J when I'm pretty sure this whole board knows that it's time to shut that hall down. The number of times they're out of compliance with the most basic minimum regulations, including right now, currently being out of compliance yet again, called in front of the State Board of Community and Corrections time and time again for their issues. It does not, it should not give any of you confidence that making improvements to that hall, which is more accurately described as a child prison, will do anything to help S Y T F youth. So please remember your own motions, your own words from last year and keep that in mind when you think about things like quote unquote, improving Berry J. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll go to Daniel. Daniel, we're going to unmute you. And you can begin.
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in and say, I, you know, agree with the previous caller that no improvement to Berry J, no improvement to any of these halls is going to make anything better. I spent seven years of my life incarcerated in a lot of these places. And the only thing that really helped me change was the credible messengers, was the nonprofit organizations that came into these places and showed me that not only I was a human being, but I was working, living a life past the incarceration that I was in at the time. You know, I, I didn't have the tools or the opportunities to teach me how, how to do any better. So when we talk about youth and crime and all they need to be punished, that's just another way to throw people away and put them in a system that only creates for us to get reincarcerated and become involved in the prison system. Ultimately, like we all know the answer, you know, get rid of probation, you know, implement credible messengers and give more opportunities for these youth to grow and get leadership skills and have people in their life that could actually show them the right way instead of throwing them away and saying, oh, they committed crimes. Oh, this is Disneyland and, and all this stuff, when in reality, it's far from Disneyland. And some of those moments, I still am traumatized and I'm twenty-seven years old now and I still deal with some of the traumas that were inflicted in me by probation staff and by being incarcerated in these systems. So ultimately, we all know the answer. The answer is get rid of probation and it is simple. We redirect the funding from probation into programs like credible messengers, like partnerships with nonprofits and things of that nature, including but not limited to the education. There's a lack of education right now in these places. People are acting out, kids are acting out because they don't even get to go outside and see the sunlight. They don't even get to breathe fresh air. I would act out too. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Next up, we have Marcia McLean. Marcia, we will unmute you. You may have to accept the unmute request, Marcia. Okay.
Much. You know, ever since the California State Legislature enacted Senate Bill eight-two-three and gave up responsibility for how to deal with our youth in the, in the most productive way. I get it. You guys have an almost impossible task to try to figure out how you're going to afford to give youth who can be rehabilitated the opportunity to rehabilitate. And so when I'm looking at your report here in addressing some of the facilities, existing facilities and improving those, that's the way to go. When you are going to try to, to implement a location that is inappropriate, that's when you're going to, to run into all the difficulties of, of residents and political opposition. So I know you didn't mention Camp Scott Scudder. However, secure youth treatment facility, that will not be appropriate in the middle of residential areas. There is no way, if you go out and take a look at that, you cannot secure that facility in order to, to make sure to keep the residents safe and the schools safe from those who will not be rehabilitated and don't wish to be rehabilitated. They just wish to, they just need to continue to be incarcerated. So once again, you have my best wishes for coming up with some solutions. The long-term solution is not Camp Scott, so I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Leah. Leah? It's your turn.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. This is Leah Seidler-Daz. I'm Youth Justice Policy Lead with UCLA School of Law's Criminal Justice Program. And I'm just calling in to urge the commission to reject the components of this plan that call for, for any investment to make Berry J Night Off a safer, more rehabilitative environment. My question really is, what does the term investment mean in this proposal? There's just no transforming in Berry J. It's a children's prison. Probation already has four hundred and ten million dollars in its budget. How can there be any justification for investing any more resources and time into a system working exactly as intended and failing the youth inside? Just last week, there were many folks here calling on the P O C to recognize that the probation department is a system with a culture designed to punish and cause harm. And there's nothing about this department and in particular Berry J that's tailored to support the care, their safety and wellbeing of our youth. I have some really serious concerns about funding or prioritizing improvements on Berry J, which simply needs to be shut down. The community has really pushed back on this every time for important reasons. This is not the first time that we've seen a proposal saying to put investment into Berry J and proposing it as them, like as a either permanent or temporary S Y T F. Directing resources is an effort to improve Berry J and trenches Berry J as a possible permanent S Y T F site. I'm not making a slippery slope argument here. Based on how the passage has played out, there's no reason to believe that coming back to the same worn-out, thoroughly discussed proposal will yield different results. Probation's history has been to dig its heels in and refuse to follow through on directives from B O S and recommendations from P O C on how it should conduct itself. I mean, just look at O C Spray. I really foresee probation fighting to keep Berry J as an S Y T F office.
Thank you, Leah. That's your time. We're going to go next to Thomas. Thomas, you can begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just listened into some of these comments. I, I just noticed a lot of them are from people who work for the community-based organizations. So of course they want us to close. They tend to want to make money off that, which make them even more evil. But anyway, my concern was what Mr. Lewis said with the staffing and I seen the post that they put up and trying to get people to work for that, for the program. I'm gonna keep it 100. You're not going to get so many ones willing to do that. If you want people to go into there, you're going to have to offer to make DPO2s. I'm a DPO1, I'm not going over there as a DPO1. You make me a DPO2, we got, we got something to talk about. A lot of people aren't going over there, you know, on their regular pay. You're going to have to have some little more extended. As much as you guys want to say, these are youth, these are young kids and everything, they're just kids. At the end of the day, we're, that's a more dangerous group. Getting stabbed, they just got stabbed in the halls recently. And we're not going to put our family in jeopardy, our lives in jeopardy. And you expect us to do a harder group and get the same pay and stay at the same position, never move up and we wonder why people don't show up to work. So Mr. Perketti, Deputy Chief, or whoever's in charge of this hiring process, start promoting people. More people to DPO2s, you will start getting, you'll see more people willing to step up. Start giving people extra pay raises, show them that you care, that you actually want them there and you will see people step up. We could do the job. Doing the job ain't an issue. We could do the job, but you, you're just not going to just throw us in there like we're just trash and not give us anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kathleen Crowley. Kathleen, give us one second. Okay, you can begin. Kathleen, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you can begin.
Okay. Hi, I apologize. This is my first time at this meeting and so I'm not sure if this is inappropriate. So please just let me know if it is. But I read years ago that probation department was going to be putting in the LA model and I have a lot of experience with the Missouri model. So I contacted, at the time it was Chief McDonald and asked to meet with her. And she set me up with her deputy chief and they were interested. They sent two probation staff to the training of my program recovery and they were very enthusiastic and said, oh my gosh, this would help us with the LA model completely. It would also help with kind of a culture change and would help provide programming within the Department of Probation. Chief McDonald left quickly after that and everything kind of went to the wayside. I then contacted Chief Gonzalez, who was also enthusiastic. He had me meet with his staff. I met with Karen Fletcher, I met with Adam Bettino, and I don't recall the other person that I met with as well as Chief Gonzalez. And he was very enthusiastic and he said, yes, this is what we need. This would work with the LA model. This would work with culture change. This would help provide programming. That was a couple of years ago. I then, I sent emails every so often to check in. I assumed that they had, I, I do other types of work too, not outside of probation. So I assumed that they had met their needs, but I now am finding they seem to have done nothing. And I'm wondering, why is that? And I would love to know. I guess I don't understand why everything is so paralyzed. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Frank Paredes. Frank, we're going to unmute you. And you can begin.
The Probation Managers Association. I just want to thank all those that were in attendance with us to discuss. POC did meet with us onsite. With regards to SYTF, we are, we are noticing the process for recruitment for that planning. We are monitoring and hearing all of the vision statements and desired outcomes. So just briefly, we have to have an engaged workforce, whether with credible messengers. They have to be purposeful. They need to be fulfilled. They need to be excited. They need to be highly trained in order for our truly, our true engagement process to grow with meaningful moments of authenticity. So we believe positive change will happen, not that it can't happen or it hasn't happened. It will happen. For those in our care, probation, obviously, through multiple forums, symposiums, however we, we take a look at, has come with a different variety of different ways to look at. But we do care and that's in any and all settings. SYTF is really valuable. There are a lot of opportunities for us all here on the call since we're all working together to the same goal set. So I hope we can continue our discussions with POC. We know it's a challenge and change and we're very supportive of our department and we believe that we can get there. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Frank. And at Commissioner Jackson's request, we are going to stop public comment after the next three speakers. So I'm going to read your names. We have Myron Carr Smith and Jackie Bedoya. And there was one more who just went away. So if you want to put your name back up there, you can. But we'll start with Myron Carr Smith. You're still muted though. Okay, now you're unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you for giving me, giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Deputy Probation Officer Ms. Carr Smith with the Los Angeles County Probation Department. My sister was named, my sister is Marisha Collins. I have echoing that's in my, I don't know.
We can hear you fine. It's not echoing on our side.
Oh, it's echoing on my side. That's fine. Well, anyway, my sister was killed on December the 10th, 2021. She was a probation officer and she was on her way back from actually getting Christmas gifts and we were going to pass them out the next day to children who, who parents are incarcerated. And it's really sad that I'm hearing all the negativity about how probation, you don't care about the kids at any facility or any organization that you are a group of, have negative people that's in it. It's really sad because my sister used to read bedtime stories to those kids in the camps. She was killed actually doing something for the community and people who kids are, are not in prison. So there are a lot of great probation officers out there and we don't get the respect of that because of the negativity outweighs the positivity. And all I hear, and it's really sad, is the complaints of what probation is not doing. But what they are doing, we don't hear that. And it's real sickening. And it's sad for my sister legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have two more commenters. It's Jackie Bedoya and Angela James, and then we'll stop public comment. So Jackie, we're going to unmute you. And you can begin.
Kirby Center. I have been there for a little bit more than 20 years. I went to Camp Scudder and Camp Scott. Dorothy Kirby Center is one of the best places to have a youth in. It used to be a home-like environment. I think you guys are trying to bring that back. But these officers and these people that work with the youth, it's really hands-on. It's a home-like environment and we need to keep that continuing for our youth and our clients so that they can integrate better in the community. But we need to have you on our side. And it's difficult being in the situation that I'm in now to deal with youth that I can't help. I need to have that help. I need to have that money funneled into my community and to my center. We don't have stoves anymore. Bring back the stoves. The kids used to cook. The kids used to clean. Now everything, oh, they can't cook, they can't clean. It's child abuse. No, that's responsibility. 15 years old, you need to learn how to do your laundry. I'm sorry. No, there's not somebody that's going to do it for you. So I just wanted to let you guys know Dorothy Kirby Center is really, really a good place and we're teaching our kids. We're teaching them how to be responsible, how to integrate with the community, how to go to school without beating up somebody as you walk by them. And those are the things that are going on at Kirby right now is it's hard just to get the kid to school. So if you guys could give me feedback on that one, I would appreciate it because I need all the help I can get.
Thank you, Angela. And our, I'm sorry, Jackie. And our final speaker will be Angela James. Angela, you can begin.
For being here, it is always astonishing to hear arguments made for a larger investment for probation and expansion of facilities that have been under Department of Justice inquiry for really good reasons. I am real concerned that whatever the plan, and if the plan moves forward to move children to Berry J, that it is done with great coordination with education. So what, how would this impact the educational partners in these locations? Because I think, you know, I heard a previous caller talk about the LA model and I hear the title LA model, but I don't see a whole lot of evidence of it. And it certainly doesn't hinge upon keeping children in prison-like circumstances with probation driving the, the car. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. And Chair Jackson, we did receive two items of written public comment that will be attached to the agenda. That's it.
Sorry, I was speaking. I was muted. I, I do apologize for having to cut public comments short. It's really important to us that we hear from all of you who feel so inclined and are very courageous in issuing public comment in this setting. I mentioned in the beginning that we do have some time constraints. And so in the best interest of the commission being able to have discussion about this item, I wanted to leave enough time for that to be able to take place. So commissioners, please raise your hands. If you'd like to discuss this item, I will say that as the report itself indicates, we don't have any great options or easy options in front of us. Any vote or any move forward in favor of this plan is probably going to be done with a great deal of skepticism. Why? Because we have very little faith in some party's ability to move forward with very effective solutions. And so we're moving forward with a plan. I hope that is going to create the best sort of opportunity for us to create an environment that's going to foster healing and rehabilitation for our young people and more importantly mitigate harm to the, to the extent possible, right? That's, that's the priority for us. So yeah, I just wanted to, to comment that before as other commissioners discuss this item. I don't see any hands so far, but I definitely hope that there's some discussion on this item. Of course, Vice Chair Kekani, you're up first.
Sorry, I feel like you can almost count on my hand.
Yes.
I'm honestly struggling. I get that this is the, like the least worst in theory of options that are probably four years too late. And some of the things recommended in here are already happening. You know, it sounds like the SYTF announcement went out. Home-like improvements, I mean, that also feels like a farce. I don't know how you make a prison a home. But whatever you want to call it, improvements have already been mandated and are funded by way of the DOJ settlement. And I don't think that like fences and beautifully painted walls necessarily change the fact that young people are in crisis and staff are in crisis because of the like fabric of an institution, because of the, the culture that is so deeply seated in the way this institution was built. And you know, I don't even know what it means to explore the reopening of LP and what that does. Maybe it reduces the number of young people who are at Berry J. But i- if the goal is to shrink the footprint like that, I don't know. That feels like a, a separate issue, but as it relates to the young folks who are currently in crisis, I, I have a hard time getting behind this. We have credible messengers who are doing their very best to get in to facilities. And I think sometimes, at least from what we're hearing, the, the restrictions that they're facing are coming from the probation department. But I don't see how this motion addresses that. And again, you know, we should be talking about like intensive crisis treatment. We should be talking about opportunities to heal. And I'm like, that, that feels like the immediate need for young people. You know, when we're hearing that young folks aren't breathing fresh air for two months at a time? Like that's what a young person shared with me. We saw him at the end of January and he shared that he had probably not been outside since, he said he lost track of days, but it was probably the beginning of December. So I don't, I don't know. Maybe a fence changes all of that. Maybe an SYTF recruitment policy or announcement changes all of that. But this doesn't really feel like the, the answer. And it sounds like some of this stuff is already happening anyway. So that's kind of where I'm sitting with this.
Thank you for that, Vice Chair Kekani. Moving on to Commissioner Canales.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Yes, I, I read through the motion, you know, when it first came out and I, I'm, I feel very torn as I'm sure, you know, many commissioners do. I have a lot of questions and it, one thing, it seems that we've been going around in circles for a couple of years now. As one caller even mentioned, we've already voted on this, you know, last year or two years ago. And, and then here we are again, you know, right back where we started. And, you know, Berry J does not have a camp-like setting. One thing I am wondering, is there already a budget and is there already staff to secure this vision? Or would it then cause for another motion to lift the hiring freeze? So that is one of my questions. And, you know, and then I have some concerns too, like, you know, changing a facility without changing the culture, it seems like it's, you know, kind of going ahead of ourselves and where we need to be. And, you know, from some of the calls coming in, I, I'm worried even about the DPO1 position compared to the DPO2 and the incentive for staff, but not just any staff, not just for a DPO1 or a DPO2 position, because that's the staff that want to be there exactly with the change that's taking place. You know, it's no secret to anyone that I have a son that, you know, 18 years old was arrested and he's, I don't even know, like 40 now because I don't keep up with my age, you know. And the person that he was before he went in is not the person he's labeled as today. You know, I have seen how this system has brought my son to be labeled as the worst of the worst without ever getting to know him when he went in, without ever knowing that at four years old, his wish to Santa Claus was that he would have his mother. It wasn't for a Nintendo or it wasn't for, his goal in life was never to be who he's claimed to be at this time. His principal stayed in touch with him for decades after his incarceration because his, they saw the potential in him. But unfortunately, the system saw no potential. So I know firsthand from experience and that's why I do claim to be an expert. When I go in there and I see those youth that are labeled the worst of the worst, that's why they're the ones that get my attention because I know they're the best of the best with the right mentorship, with the right leadership and with the right heart. And that's why this is so important to me and I have so many questions. And, you know, so when I'm concerned about the budget, is there already a budget in place? Is there already staffing in place? Would it move for a motion? Would it move for a motion to lift the hiring freeze? And then when you talk about immediate compared to long-term, we've seen how things go. I mean, even the roller bars, how much of a worldwide demand is there for roller bars that we've waited this long? For roller bars on the fences at Kilpatrick? And so, you know, when we see the solutions, is there gonna be timelines and deadlines? And if we don't meet those deadlines, then what would be the next step towards solutions? So these are just some of the questions I have that I'm lifting up for discussion. Thank you.
I'd like, before we move on to other commissioners to comment or ask questions, if anyone from the subcommittee can speak to budget and staffing. With, Adam, you already spoke somewhat to staffing both, especially to budgeting.
Sure, I could try. So there are some state funds that we receive for this population specifically. At current, currently, there's between thirty and forty million that's been set aside. The JJRBT Subcommittee is really seeking to utilize the majority of that for programming, not for staffing. We, obviously, you know, as Commissioner Canales mentioned, there's a hiring freeze. We've been working with CEO to continue to run academies because we know that we do need new recruits to come in. But for this population, the conversation really is about using existing vacancies and not expanding the number of probation staff that we would require. So we're still kind of doing the math, frankly, to try to figure out exactly, you know, staffing ratios and getting folks in there to provide as much assistance as possible. And really, again, the short term is to try to run some, you know, sort of a separate campus within a campus at Berry J. So you would have dedicated SYTF staff who'd be providing support to those young people at Berry J and at Campus Kilpatrick, and not relying so much on the detention services staff. The issue, though, that, and again, this, I don't wanna get too far into this, but it's a finite pool of resources. So we're using the same sort of staff when we promote. We're using, you know, the existing vacancies that we have internally. So it is a little bit of a, there's some movement needs to happen to determine, you know, exactly how we fill these positions. And be clear, I mean, we are recruiting for these positions. We are not just taking anyone and everyone. There is a, there's been a, I think, consensus, certainly amongst the Subcommittee and others, that we need to recruit. We want people who want to work with this population. So we're making every effort to do that.
Great. Well, how do you feel about the commenter's suggestion to promote the DPOs and incentivize the transfer?
So that, those are all things that are in fact being discussed now. Some of that is being negotiated, and I can't speak about it in a public meeting. So as folks are aware, we're still negotiating with Local 685 around their contract. So those things are on the table. We're working with CEO Employee Relations on some of those. We certainly want to be able to do that as much as possible. Probation does not have the authority to provide bonuses. All of that has to come through CEO. So those conversations are ongoing, and I think as we get into this, again, we're using vacancies that we have. If they're not the right level, then the CEO's been really accommodating to discuss if we need to elevate those positions or offer at a higher level to attract more staff. We just started the process. We know that we have folks who want to work with this population. We know that we have folks who are excited to continue working with this population. So yes, all of those things are on the table. We're working through it, but some of them are happening in negotiation. And we hope to have an update shortly that we can provide.
So since you know that there are so many people looking forward to maybe standing in those gaps when it comes to staffing, you don't have any real concerns about staffing being an issue once it's time to open the facility, whichever we land on?
I mean, of course, I've been, I'll say unpleasantly surprised throughout all of this process, to be frank, right? So I don't imagine that it'll be the most, I don't imagine that we'll get through this without some challenges, but again, there's flexibility with the current classifications that we have. And I think we're just now, we just now got to the point where we can start to recruit. We're gonna have to pivot quickly. So we're reviewing applications as they come in. Depending on how that goes in the short term, we can pivot and we can try to get some, you know, additional positions in place. That'll be more supportive. But we're just now starting out, and I'm happy to come back with updates to this body as we learn more. But we are certainly trying to be as flexible as possible. To say that we won't have ongoing staffing concerns, I don't know right now. I mean, that's obviously been a big issue for the department in general. But we're working with our partners to make sure that we're, first of all, we're still running academies. We're running two right now, so we're getting some new staff in the door. We're hoping that that starts to free things up so that we can effectively recruit for these other positions.
Thank you for that. I'm not sure if, Patricia, you wanted to speak to that before we move on to Commissioner Carrio?
Not specifically that, but to some of the prior comments, so I can wait or whatever's most helpful.
Yeah, let's move on to Commissioner Carrio first, and then we can move, we can go back.
Chair, I understand your comment about these are like great nor easy decisions. But this should at least be smart.
Sorry, you're a little, you're breaking up just a little bit. I wanna make sure that everything you say is fair to us.
Can you hear me a bit better?
Better, yes, yes.
So Chair, I'm gonna quote you here. You said that you understand that these are like great nor easy decisions. And I wanna push back a little bit and say this should at least be smart and realistic. I heard, I heard Adam Bettino, Chief Deputy, mentioned that everything is on the table. Obviously, this is a topic where I feel that I am under arrest. We have taken this to an emergency level. It's a county emergency. It's, all eyes are on Los Angeles, and other counties obviously. But this moment of everything is on the table, I have to say that I think some of the things should be taken off the table to make this a realistic vision of the future. You know, we've talked a lot about decarceration of girls. We've talked about probation being strengthened by other motions about how to conduct your business, how to interact with youth and Department. But in many ways, none of that is being implemented as of yet. And so I wanted share a bit more, but I'm going towards asking this body, this motion, and introduce the following, which is, maybe Wendy, you can help me with this, but at the core of what I want to amend is that in order for this SYTF, if it gets accepted by this body, that we have to close Central Juvenile Hall and reallocate all the staff, resources, funds to this plan that we're, if we embrace it and move it towards a vote to the supervisors. Because of, as of right now, it's gray on paper, but it's not realistic. And shutting down this institution that is, as Patricia Song has mentioned, is over, is very old, and it's last I recall, it's one hundred and eleven years old. It will free up a lot of staff, teachers, nurses, and finite resources, as Adam Bettino has mentioned that they have, to make this happen. SYTF is and should be on everyone's mind as an emergency. And although we're under duress at this moment with this topic, I think that in order for it to actually happen, whenever it happens, we need to shut down Central Juvenile Hall.
Proceedurally, Commissioner Carrio, there is not a motion on the floor. So if you wanna make a motion, you can certainly do that, or anyone can make a motion. I think that's the end of my sentence.
Sure, I need to, I wanna be, from a procedure standpoint, I'm not sure how that conflicts with or complements the plan for us to either recommend, like, to vote in favor of the recommendation or against. But I just wanna make sure that we handle one thing at a time. So if we adopt Commissioner Carrio's motion, do we first need to either accept or deny the recommendation?
I'll let Amara weigh in on this, but there just needs to be a motion in order for, a motion and a second to start discussion about it. And that motion and second could be anything that is allowable under the Brown Act on this item. Does that sound right, Amara?
This is Amara Kirby. I would, oh, Danielle, hi. Do you wanna go in last day?
No, 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 I didn't. I didn't know if you were having computer troubles. I'll go ahead and let you take it.
No, but you would, I would first handle the recommendation. But I do agree with your comments, Wendy, about the motion connecting to that topic.
So I would, I would motion to amend the motion that's on the floor to include closing Central Juvenile Hall in order to facilitate the larger plan.
Okay, motion's been made by Commissioner Carrio and seconded by Commissioner Lewis. I think this is a good time for us to have discussion about this because I'm not really sure, and I want this to be very clear to all of us on this call, how closing Central feeds into this plan. I mean, that's obviously one of our ideals. That's our objective, right? Facility closure is one of our sort of directives, if you will. But can we have more robust discussion about what it means to close Central? Understanding that this could mean it would create some real capacity issues over at Berry. I mean, it could create a host of issues. So maybe let's just discuss this, and since, oh. Well, Commissioner Kekani, lots of people have raised their hands, and I wanna make sure that Patricia's also able to weigh in. But let's leave it to Commissioner Kekani for now.
Oh, okay, I was happy to let Patricia go first. I guess I'm just, sorry, I'm just, this feels like, this feels, what is it, putting the cart before the horse? Like, I feel like there is so much that needs to be addressed if we're talking about closing Central, which really does feel somewhat separate and apart from how we're supporting SYTF youth. I mean, there are almost three hundred young people at Central Juvenile Hall, many of whom, when shuttled to Berry J overnight last March, were thrown into a complete state of chaos and whose, like, harm and trauma, we haven't even started to address or name, acknowledge any of the things. So to, I guess I'm just confused. I'm at a loss, because I appreciate closing down facilities all for it. In fact, you know, maybe we should make a motion to close down Berry J then. But I, I guess I'm just not, this feels like it requires some significant discussion, analysis. I know that Supervisor Solis had authored a motion that subsequently passed about a report back from probation about the feasibility of shutting down Central Juvenile Hall. We have not discussed that. We have not heard from people in the community, young people, their families. So I feels like it requires a little more thoughtful discussion than like the five minutes that we have left.
Yeah, I'd actually, I'd like to punt it back to Commissioner Carrio, just because he stated the motion originally.
So my understanding, Commissioner Kekani, where there you are, is is that there is this, this, I guess, is directive or motion to decarcerate girls. I feel like you've called in prior to you being a commissioner in support of these items, along with, you know, language about reform and progressive movements towards probation doing the right thing. And so that's one thing that probation can begin doing in order to lower that population. You're talking about these three hundred youth over there. Another thing is that probation can assess those who are at Central and Berry J, who are pre-dispo, and determine that they can just be released pending their outcome of their cases. Right now, probation has been, and this is not directed to you, Commissioner Kekani, this in general, this is something that we've all been either waiting for, because it's an option that they have. It's, this is, the default of just putting them in Juvenile Hall has been what we've all accepted. But there is other options that are on the table they can apply, they can implement. And so I understand that this is, it's new to this motion, it's new to this topic. But as Chief Deputy Adam Bettino just pointed out, everything, we've probably, we've actually named just about every facility that under probation's umbrella that is sort of circling this motion. So this is, I'm not sure how Central cannot be part of the equation here if we're talking about finite resources that need to be reallocated for these other things that we wanna either support or not support for this to work. So we have to be very realistic about if this idea that, because we're under this duress of addressing this SYTF after, as Patricia Song has said, after years, we have to look at this completely and think about this, not only about the things that are originally on this motion, but now what I'm including.
I'm struggling. Thank you for that, Commissioner. I'm struggling to find alignment in the motion. I do think that we need to move things along and allow other commissioners to weigh in. And I believe Commissioner Kekani has to lead the meeting very, very shortly. So let's hear from Commissioner Canales.
Commissioner Lewis had his hand up even before we.
Okay, 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 I lose track. Happy to go to Commissioner Lewis next. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair Jackson and Commissioner Canales. I think when we look at the recommendations, we're talking about both short term and long term. And I think what Commissioner Carrio recommended is, falls somewhere in between. It could be long term. In this sense, at least the way I, when he said it, I thought we close Central, we open LP, we make LP, and this is just putting more thought into this. We make LP SYTF, we make Los Pedrinas pre-dispo. And this is a piece that's definitely, there should be a separate borough chief specifically just for SYTF. I say this based on, we've been doing this for two years, and in my opinion, as I continue to gather facts and dig into it, you have a layer of administrators that are obstructionists in the department that have literally delayed the actions that we need to take as a county in order to make sure both the youth and the staff are safe. These facilities, when we look at these facilities, Central is the oldest, I've been in all three of the facilities. Los Pedrinas would need some, because it's in disrepair to some extent, but it's also newer than Central. Central's in, we won't even get into that, but Central's a horrible facility. But between those two, we're not increased by closing Central and using Los Pedrinas and Berry J. You're not increasing the footprint. It's staying the same, and you have two separate facilities, one for predisposition youth that are not SYTF, and one for youth that have been sentenced in our SYTF. It gives you more space in instances, and one of the things that comes to mind, I'll close out as quickly as I can, Chair Jackson, going back to what one of the callers said. A probation staff was stabbed last week, or week before last. And probation staff called in and talked about equity, and I agree with them about equity. But let me give a bit of insight to the probation oversight commission. There are two youth that were really causing problems inside Berry J. These two youth were moved, and they were contained. They were not segregated or isolated. They had each other, so they were contained, and they were not causing problems. The leadership in Berry J said, "We have to move them because we can't stab this right now." They put that individual, and those two youth, back in X facility, and that probation officer was stabbed. The leadership in this facility was told by directors and supervisors, "We cannot put this young man back into X facility." They did it anyway. And this is also what has happened time and time again, where youth and staff have been harmed. We have just been lucky, and I wanna say this with emphasis, we've been lucky that no one has lost their life inside these facilities, because leadership, again, is not freaking listening to the boots on the ground, the directors and the supervisors that know these young people that actually know how to work with them. And so there's a whole layer of administrators, and there's some leadership that needs to be moved in order for us to move forward. We would, this would have been done two years ago if we did not have these obstructionists that are inside the Department of Probation. That's a fact. I'm continuing to document this and move this forward as I continue to find facts, as I go in every week. And a lot of this is coming from directors and supervisors that I will not, I will not as I continue to find facts, as I go in every week. And, and a lot of this is coming from directors and supervisors that I will not, I will not share their names, but these are facts. This, this is not what I'm guessing at. When you have a director or a supervisor that tells you, do not move this youth into this facility, it will, it will cause harm to that youth, or will cause harm to staff, and you override that anyway, that tells me that you're either, you're either incompetent, you don't care, or you're insidious in such a way where you want to see harm happen. If it was my staff and they told me not to do something, and, and their boots on the ground, that they're working with people, I would listen to them. They know what's best. And so I say that to say, I'm, I'm going back and forth, one, to the staff member that, that spoke about the staff member that had been stabbed in Berry J. We're aware of it, and I agree with equity. When we look at this particular recommendation, if we could amend it to say long term or short term, I'm not sure how we want to word it, we close Central, we utilize one facility for predisposition, one facility for SYTF, create a new borough chief, and really stab this up so that we can help people, young people, become the best version of themselves, and so the facilities can be safe, so that the people that are working in the facility and the people that are housing these facilities can be safe.
Thank you, Commissioner Lewis. I will say that most of us, I would say maybe the full commission, we, we're not arguing against the premise of the argument and the motion that you and Commissioner Carrillo was making. I think the, I'm confused by the context of it. There's no explicit mention of that in this plan that we're all looking at. And so knowing that I'm in favor of informed decision-making, it's hard to support the motion or understand the placement of it, knowing that it's not something that we've been able to consider before this meeting. I will, I mean, I guess we should just move forward with a, a vote on the motion itself so that we can move things along. But I would say that in that feasibility study that was conducted where they looked at all the different facilities and evaluated whether they would be suitable for something like this, even as some sort of proposal of alternatives in the plan would have been helpful, but since there's no mention of it, it's hard to support it. So I'll leave it to commissioners perhaps to vote for it, but should it be restated before we do that?
Sure. Commissioner Carrillo, what I wrote down is that your motion is to accept the SYTF proposal as presented and add to it that it also include to close Central Juvenile Hall and move the resources allocated there to the other facilities. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, so that was moved by Commissioner Carrillo, seconded by Commissioner Lewis. And you can vote yes, no, or abstain. Commissioner Canales?
Yes, I, yes.
Commissioner Carrillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Kekani?
No.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
And Commissioner Jackson?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay, so with three votes, the motion carries.
All right. Thank you all, commissioners, for that exercise. I think we need to bring the conversation back to the recommendation itself. So, or does that close out that item, Wendy? Because is it specific to the closure piece? Or I think we need to go back to the original plan and decide as a commission if we embrace the recommendation or not, right?
I will ask County Council to weigh in on that, but it's not, or maybe even Commissioner Carrillo. But the way I wrote the motion, it's, and read it back, it said to accept the SYTF proposal as presented with that amendment.
That's what I heard you read. Oh, sorry, Chair Jackson. No, I, that's what I heard you, you read back, Wendy, in terms of the original language of the motion. I would have to double check that, but that was my recollection.
Okay, well, here's, I'll just move forward to the next agenda item, understanding that I didn't support the amendment itself, but had an idea for the, the, the plan, and maybe that's something that can be revisited at a later time and maybe when the plan has been further developed. So I will move on to the next agenda item where we discuss matters that are not posted on the agenda for commissioners. Do you have any announcements or information to include for this item?
I'll just say we'll have our next meeting on March 9th, and it will be in person. So please look out for details on that information, and we look forward to meeting and seeing the faces of many of you who've been commenting with us for two years.
Yes, a very exciting change that's coming up. Commissioner Canales, your hand is up.
Yes, thank you. My hand had been up since we were talking about Central as well as Patricia's songs. And it was on comments on Central. She put it down, and I think she even left. Oh, no, she's still here. I was really interested in hearing her feedback about it. She had her hand up as well as I. And then I, I don't know if it got closed, or we were no longer allowed to say anything. Next thing I know, I'm not sure what happened there.
Well, we voted, and.
It was up before we voted. Both of our hands were up before we voted.
Okay, if you have any additional remarks, you, you're welcome to state them here. No problem with that.
Thank you. Yes, I did want to say that, to also keep in mind that Central has continuously and constantly been in numerous violations with the BSCC. And, you know, obviously, when, you know, making the friendly amendment and the motion, it's not just to close it down in a day because we've seen problems in the past, but I think to be in communication and conversation on the closure of it so that it works out for all because we know there was not just chaos to the youth, but to staff as well, literally like where, you know, and, and the staff said it was those in leadership, the way that it, it had happened. And since we've been through that one time already where it went really bad, I think in closing Central, now we can be in communication to where it actually works. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Canales. Patricia, would you like to add comment here?
Sure, I'll just leave the commission with, you know, the, the wrangling that Adam knows too well, that our subcommittee went through as you continued its discussion, including around Central. Because I think that, you know, if you were to place it somewhere in this motion, perhaps it would be in the long-term planning because of kind of like the, the push that closing any facility requires, looking at another facility, and then you have to think about what happens with that facility, you know, like it's just a full sort of master planning that has to happen, that hasn't happened. But I want to bring it back to, I think, the, the urgency that this motion was brought with before the JGRBG as well, was thinking about the next four months, right? Like, what will happen in July when all the young people are back in this county and the state prison system has closed? And in the absence of another viable facility, we were left with the reality that young people will be at Berry J. They are already there. I have been reluctant to call anything that is, you know, carved out at Berry J and SYTF. We, you know, contemplated that changes are already being made. This is not really an additional investment. Even a fence is not a permanent fence. It is a temporary kind of sectioning off to create a more manageable population. But unless we put it on the table, it is harder to monitor, harder to insist on something better. It's harder to elaborate upon, at least for the JGRBG, which is statutorily required to make recommendations around SYTF. So that's just a short-term plan. I think we made it really caveated that we were supporting Berry J because young people are already there, and something needs to happen immediately. For those on the commission who, you know, are really pushing for somewhere else, I think, you know, any ideas about what that could be, the JGRBG would like to contemplate too. We've gone through the blueprints for every facility possible, and it's like this terrible process of elimination, right? If we go to a camp, there are BSCC modifications that will not happen on the timeline. We need to in the next four months. But that's also why we put in, there should be continued exploration and explicit planning, timeline, costs for physical modifications of places like Dorothy Kirby. We are also trying not to expand the footprint. We're also trying not to displace current populations of young people and good programming like in places like Dorothy Kirby. So there's like all these factors where, I swear, we tried to think of every other place than Berry J. Our body, prior bodies have made motions to say explicitly not Berry J, and here we are saying temporarily use Berry J, make it better, bring in staffing, bring in programming, and then meanwhile identify another place. So that is really the spirit of the recommendations. We are not saying SYTF should be at Berry J, but it is this real, you know, coming to terms that we are where we are in Fe, end of February, and something has to happen for these young people that is better than what they're getting right now. So I just really want to leave the commission with that hard conversation that we've been having as well.
Thank you so much for that. I think most of us probably share the fear that a temporary plan could become much more permanent than we would want, and especially with the conditions that we're concerned about. I mean, we're all just kind of juggling, juggling, a lot of time to reconcile where's the best route to sort of take. I want to promote discussion. I don't want to take too many steps backwards, but three commissioners have raised their hand on this item, even though we've moved on to another item. Is there any conflict with us inviting those comments, County Council, Wendy? Because I'd like to hear from the three commissioners on this before we move on.
I, I won't speak for Amara, but I think the item is agendized, so we've just, I mean, you've just got the, going back to the same agenda item. I think that's fine.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Lewis? Oh, you're muted.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Chair Jackson. I had raised my hand because I thought this was for things that aren't on the agenda. However, just for clarity, because I'm, I'm a little confused now. So we're tabling this, we're not voting on up or down on the recommendation with the amendment from Commissioner Carrillo.
No, you voted on that. We just voted on that, yeah.
So the recommendations with the amendment move forward?
Correct.
Okay, that, that, that was my only question. Now, if the other commissioners have questions about this specific topic, I'll hold what I want to say for, for when it's things that aren't on the agenda.
Matters not posted. Okay, great. Let's move on to Commissioner Carrillo, and if you are talking about this previous agenda items.
I'm not talking about the previous agenda item. I'm talking about the, the one that, that's on the table now. I just want to, I want to just say thank you to, to the union leader Frank Barrezas for giving us a breath of fresh air. You know, hearing him speak about just with this optimistic tone about just realizing that, that the department is moving in this direction. And, and, and on the polar end, we have Thomas Bell calling and say that, as, as he's trying to make a point about the the ones and twos about these, 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 not raises, but these promotions, you know, he closes with a statement about like, they will go with the trash, as if like, you know, referring to these kids, SYTF or whatever, like, it's just, it's just really unfortunate that we still have this, these polarized ways of thinking about it. And I'm grateful that the leadership and Frank has a very optimistic take on it. And sadly, folks who are there in the facilities are still referring to these youths as trash. And for those who are here on this commission who have system, who've lived through these experiences, it's really unfortunate to refer to them indirectly us as, as trash. So that's just, I needed to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you for that, confirming that we are moving on to the agenda item. I'm focused on matters not posted. So Commissioner Lewis?
Thank you, Chair Jackson. I want to clarify my position and why I took the position I did at the previous board. And please, have a little patience with me as I, I wrote this out to be clear. I'm sending this out so that you, so that everyone, everyone understands why I believe both the chief and the deputy chief of probation should resign. My position was not based on a single event that transpired at Campus Kilpatrick on 2020. My position is based on a number of events. The most recent and troubling events are as follows. During the past months, it seems as though the superintendent of Berry J Not Old Juvenile Hall has put both staff and youth in serious risk of, by failing to listen to his staff and contracted employees. The first incident and the staffing issues that follow is the report that follow is a report that I have also submitted to the chief and deputy chief. Their failure to put action behind this put both staff and youth in Berry J Juvenile Hall in grave danger. On Thursday, February 2nd, five youth were moved from Y2 to Unit X1 and X2 in order to make room for youth that were being transferred from DJJ to SYTF. ARC and HDA credible messenger staff were on site to support the youth and the probation staff during these moves. When the staff from ARC observed that one of the youth, whose name I can't mention because he's, he's a juvenile, was going to be moved into X1, they told the staff that this youth should not be moved into this unit due to a previous incident. Probation supervisors reached out to their superiors, and the probation staff responded, we have to put him here. On Friday, February 3rd, 2023, I was notified that this youth had been slashed across the space by another youth, youth in X1. Friday evening, I went to Berry J to visit and check on this young man, however he had been moved to Central Juvenile Hall. I took the time to meet with youth and staff in X1 and X2, and I also reviewed the logbook in X1. The entry in the logbook in X1, surprisingly, surprisingly, this incident was categorized as having been in a fight and not a slashing. On February 2nd, when the youth were moved from Y2 to X1, was completely blank in the logbook. Remember, logbooks are legal documents. A few days later, this youth was transferred back to Berry J, the youth that had been slashed. And again, he was brought to Unit X. This time, he was placed in Unit X3 against the recommendation of staff, directors, and supervisors that this you, that this youth should not be placed there. The youth in X1 broke windows and kicked open the security bubble door in an attempt to get to this youth. They kicked open the door. Let, let's get clear. This youth was then removed and placed in Unit L and M where no further incidents have occurred. If the superintendent had listened to the supervisors and directors who were there with the youth every day, this would not have, this youth would not have been slashed and would not have been put in multiple, would not have been put in danger on multiple occasions. It took two days to have that door secured, that, that security door repaired. Most recently, one of the youth who had been moved out of X unit and moved into P unit for safety reasons was returned to Unit X. The move again was done against the recommendations of supervisors and directors who work with these young people. In the following days, in the days that followed, when this youth was returned to Unit X, this unit, this youth stabbed a probation officer. This youth has since been transferred to Central Juvenile Jail. A simple investigation would verify these facts. It is clear that the facility is not being managed properly by the current superintendent. The lives of both staff and youth are being put at risk. The chief, chief deputy Fletcher is responsible for operations, which includes the halls. This, the person who leads Berry J right now was selected by who other than? Operations are clearly, operations, facilities clearly fall under operations. Additionally, I spoke to several staff members regarding movement of staff out of SYTF. I was told that they will be in place with ghost staff. I had never, ever heard the term ghost staff prior to this, and I asked, what did it mean? The staff explained to me, and this is a supervisor that told me this. The staff explained to me that these are staff that are on sick leave that may, and we don't know when they will, they will return. Must I ask this? Why are we moving staff that, first of all, did not want to be moved out of SYTF? Out of SYTF and causing the disruption of, of programming? I also spoke with staff that had been moved, that those particular staff specifically that had been moved out of SYTF, and they said they did not want to be moved. I reported this directly to the deputy chief. I have emails to verify this. If we have leaders in these facilities that are not making sure that both the youth and the staff are safe, that are not listening to the, the people that are working with them that are telling you, don't do this, obviously, that person should not be the final say in a facility where lives are at stake. I say this, I would not say this, like, listen, I'm not going to leave, lose no more sleep over this. I'm going to keep pushing this and pushing this and pushing this because it's all documented. And this is just, this, this is that, that, that administrative level, obstructionist, people that want to see this fail, people that want to see others fail. But when it's, when it's directly reported to both the deputy chief and the chief, and they do not take action, what should we do? Thank you, Chair Jackson.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Lewis, for clarifying and for getting that on, on record. We are going to close this agenda item if no other commissioners have further comment on matters not posted. We are going to adjourn the meeting at this time. I thank you all for attending this meeting and for any contribution that was made in time or comment. As a quick reminder, be sure to follow us on social media and subscribe to our YouTube channel at LA County POC. uh POC. Uh to receive reminders about upcoming meetings, visit our website at POC.lacounty.gov to, to subscribe to our email listing. It is now 3:22, and I adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.